Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the December 2nd meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. I'm gonna read today's proverb. It's 28, 25 through 26. Greed causes fighting. Trusting the Lord leads to prosperity. Those who trust their own insight are foolish, but anyone who walks in wisdom is safe.
He's a four-month-old boxer miss. Mail. He's ready for adoption on the 5th. We have 21 other dogs there, so...
Aww.
This isn't your type. Come see us. We also made a little improvement over there. Not a little. We divided up. We had a large outside run. Now we have three. We divided it into thirds, so we can get more dogs outside to exercise. It was a long, ongoing project, but we finally got it done.
Good. That's great. Look how cute. He's a sweetie. You wanna do Brandy now?
Yeah.
Brandy Schnell from our solid waste department.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone else. I'm Brandy Schnell from the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District. We did, with American Recycles Day, we had a display at the Carlisle Visitors Center where people were able to come in and sign their American Recycles Day pledge cards, and they were also able to enter into a drawing for a rain barrel. We had 56 entries, which is great, and so I'm gonna bring that up and we're gonna draw the winner.
We voted for you, Matt, to draw the winning.
Oh, voted for me, yeah.
That'll teach you.
Rain barrel. And it looks like a real barrel. And the winner is Brandy Schnell. No. Heather Ryan of Illyria.
Congratulations, Heather.
Congratulations, Heather. Heather Ryan of Illyria. We'll be calling you to pick up your free rain barrel. How do you transport that thing home?
Oh, you have to talk. No, we'll figure it out, for sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Book?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a number of things I wanna talk to the Board about. Potential hires at the Collection Center, some potential Board nominees, and I spoke with our Labor Consultant yesterday. I need to talk to you about, a little bit more about what we're gonna do with our Labor contract that's getting ready to expire, and potential litigation. All those topics are available under the Sunshine Act for Executive Session Discussion, so to ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into Executive Session and we talk about those issues that I've outlined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve only the reading in the minutes on November 25th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to Boyart &amp; Cool Home for funerals, Lorraine for indigent veteran Randolph Maurice Caswell, Lorraine, in accordance with the ORC 5901.29.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under solid waste, advertise for bids for the LED static highway sign at Lorraine County Port Authority Complex, Illyria, notice being the chronicle on December 23rd and 30th and open at 2:00 PM on January 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this the sign that's gonna be able to be seen from 57?
Yes. As you know, and it's been a... You know, some projects don't seem to really get the kinda traction you think they're gonna get, and this is, this isn't an urgency on this project. We're putting in the Training Center over at the Collection Center. Well, part of, part of that, what we take, we've taken a look at, and it'll be coming back to the Board for concept approval, is, you remember initially we were going to come in to, you okay, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm fine.
The, to the back way we do off of Abbey, I should say the back way, but the Abbey Road entrance, we were going to move towards the back of the building on the drive, then come out the front of the building. We weren't able to secure all of the building at the time. It was a condo, and we were in the condo nest. We have since, as the Port Authority, been able to acquire the additional parcels so that the entire building now rests in the control of the Port Authority. The Board originally approved putting the Training Center up where the old bookseller was, but the concept may now be to put the Training Center up there, expand out a little wider, and go back to that original concept, the Abbey Road, out into the parking area, and exit through the front there. The reason we're re-looking at that is because the turn radius is really sharp inside that building, and anything bigger than a mid-sized car, sometimes they, well, not sometimes, a lot of times end up having to make part of the turn back up and finish the turn. Now, that said, it's not to turn residents from coming. We've had 30,000-plus visits.
More than that. We had a $50,000, or 50,000 person...
Was it?
Not too long ago, yeah.
The, the, so, but, there's always been a potential for hazardous situation with the movement of vehicles and people in that corridor. So, as part of that, the whole process, when we bring that to you, we're also gonna bring you a suggestion that we use that big sign on 57 to advertise the Collection Center and the things that are going on at the Training Center. The sign will be under the control of the Port Authority. There'll be other things on the sign, but it also will be used to make announcements with, for solid waste and the things that are going on there.
Shred days, tighter days.
Exactly. I, I, I think it's, it's gonna be a real good addition. We have to work out, you know, how it's gonna be used. Again, it won't be, at the end of the day, it won't be controlled by the Solid Waste District, but since they're installing the sign, they'll have the lion's share of the advertisement and on the, there'll be no charge back to them, as we use the sign over here at the Transportation Center. So, I wanna get quotes on it from outside. We've had a few people come in and look at it. It's gonna be, it's gonna be borderline whether we can take quotes or seal bids, so we're just gonna be cautious and go the seal bid route and see what happens. And if it's too expensive, we may have to walk away from it. We're grandfather on that sign. It's hard to get these signs anymore, but we're grandfather on that big one out there in the parking lot. And anything's better than the big red flea market sign out there. And along with these changes, we're also gonna, going to paint the building, take out some of the, some of the hard surfaces that are never gonna be used again, and make it look much better as a corporate neighborhood in that, that area over there.
Thanks for the update.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Yes.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under transit, approve and overturn agreement with City of Oberlin to provide transportation service effective January 4, 2016 through December 29, 2016. City of Oberlin will provide $22.26 per hour to be used by the transit as match for grant funds to support the service, plus $50 monthly fee to cover administrative expenses. No general funds will be used.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Right, just we had this discussion, say, Team Lorraine County about the importance of the transit, and just Oberlin's partnership really makes a big difference, which we had more communities who would tie in with us and help us to get some of these services provided, just because of the match we get back from the feds, so, I mean, wish we had 30 of these contracts.
Right.
It would, it would be nice to have these, develop these partnerships. The, you know, unfortunately, like us, a lot of these municipalities don't have the liquidity, the cash. And all you have to do is, you know, look at what's going on in Lorraine, and Illyria's trying for another income tax initiative to shore up their budget. Everybody's hurting.
Yeah, more and more business leaders are realizing how important transit is to helping get people to work, and, you know, we've already lost some people, some potential companies because of not having transit.
We heard yesterday from, from a business that I've known for some time. In fact, I think 10 years ago, we did some abatements and, to help expand that company, and it's over in Avon. Now, this is Avon, so it's one of our premier communities, and indicated that he has 100 permanent jobs, and he has 50 that are through a temp service because he can't find another 50 people at, and it's, these are $10 an hour jobs, and I don't want to mislead you, but he can't consistently come to work because of transportation issues. So he uses the temp service because they're responsible for getting bodies there. And what the temp service does is they drive them to his location and drop them off and pick them up. So, he doesn't have to worry about, you know, eight, I'm being metaphoric, but eight o'clock in the morning, when he pushes the button to get the machines rolling, whether he has the 50 bodies he needs or only 42 show up because eight couldn't find transportation that morning. And he said that if, if we had a consistent transit, he believes that a lot of that problem could be alleviated because there is, there is a ready workforce that will take those kinda jobs, but we need to get them over there.
That's a significant issue we've got.
It was also mentioned that a lot of the site selectors and the packages going out, they wanna know that there's an actual route going past the property where they would potentially have a business, so that they know that they can get people there to work, so.
Well, yeah.
It's a...
And that's the conversation we need to have with, you know, Avon, North Ridgeville, Avon Lake. This business is located in Avon.
Right.
His working, his workers are gonna be drawn from the Illyria/Lorraine area, given the, the level of compensation, the job. They're responsible jobs, they're decent jobs, but he, so Avon needs public transportation as well as Lorraine and Illyria, because they need workers to go there. They need the manufacturers and the businesses there to give them a solid income, uh, income tax base, et cetera, et cetera. And the same thing will happen when Capellas comes in and Menards come in. That's all great, all that expansion, but they need to get workers to those job sites. You can have all the nicety you want, but if you can't keep workers there and keep them there consistently, that's not gonna, it's not gonna function very well. So that's why some of the communities are saying, well, what could transit do for us? We don't need transit in this community. People have cars in this community. You still need workers, and the workers still need to get transported there. So, we, that, you know, that's another part of the message that we need to continue to send, because we have not been successful in, in the newer communities on the east side of Lorraine County with, with vote account.
Yeah, we have big growth in healthcare, and you look at the support staff that's in, you know, any hospital around here, and, you know, most of those folks, you know, you can tell money's, money's tight, and they need a way to just get to work as well, too.
So, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, cobble together the, the message that people understand this time when we make an initiative, that, that even though you live in a community that seemingly doesn't really require mass transit, you still have a need for it.
Maybe time to talk to Avon again. They partnered with us back, you know, years ago.
That was Avon Lake.
That was Avon Lake, that deal? Okay. We were talking to Avon and Avon Lake.
Well, you know, when they partnered, what it was more about their citizenry than it was about jobs. And, and they, they, they really didn't see an overarching priority for the limited services that we could provide with them as, as a partner. We need park and rides. We're missing a huge opportunity. Quite frankly, we should've owned the land before the explosion in Avon along that corridor. We've looked at many, many things along 83, and then when the Nagel interchange was coming in, all the property was gone already.
Right.
The, the, I would love to see us with a park and ride somewhere by Jay Cox or Air Nagle, and, so that we can transport people to job opportunities. Now, I don't wanna be criticized again, like we were two years ago, about transporting people to Cleveland. Let me just clear it, not to you, but while we speak, that 50% of our people leave this county every day to go to work. It's an, it's an important element of, of getting them to jobs is mass transit. They're leaving here, they go on the park and rides in Cuyahoga County sometimes. We, we need to be part of that regional approach to move people to jobs, so they can come home here, and they can, they can have prosperity here, and they spend here, and they live here, and they grow their families here. It's unrealistic to think that we have a wall at the border over, between Westlake and Avon, Avon Lake and Bay Village. It just doesn't exist. All you have to do is watch the car counts, leaving Lorraine County, for the most part in the morning, coming back in the evening. And, and, and that's the misunderstanding. We were criticized because we were taking people down to the casino, or down to Public Square, trying to hook 'em up with the transportation. What we're trying to do is hook 'em up with a job, and hook 'em up with a way to get downtown, or get downtown and get on that Euclid corridor where hundreds of millions of taxpayers' dollars, our taxpayers' dollars, were spent for the innovation down there to be able to go to Cleveland Clinic and hook up with that transportation system. We should be able to, somebody should be able to get on a bus in Lorraine, get downtown to Public Square, and get on that Euclid corridor, and go to the Cleveland Clinic if they need to.
Well, that's exploded. I was talking with Valerie McCall, who is on the WAC, Chief of Staff, Jack, Chief of Staff for Mayor Jackson and Joe Calabrese, and the expected return on that investment was gonna be three or three and a half billion dollars in development along that corridor. They've broken like six billion dollars in investment with residential and businesses opening and the impact that...
Well, sure, you know, they went down, they blighted all of that. They took down a lot of the, the older...
Right.
They've, they've opened land so that it can be redeveloped, all that demo that's gone on down the corridor. My concern for our residents, though, is, is clearly to be able to hook them with the services they need. Now, we got the new hospital here, and, and that's gonna, that's going to be great, but there's still things that are done. Down there at the main campuses, you'll be surprised, I, I look, just from our group healthcare, I look at where our payments go, and, and you'll be surprised how many people are at the main campuses having various ailments treated down there. And, and right now, if you don't have the ability to have somebody drive you, drive yourself, you're not getting down there.
Yeah, the trends are all showing. Fewer millennials really wanna even hold a driver's license, and they definitely wanna be using public transit. And, so times are changing. We need to change with the times.
Yes, sir. Anyway, I know you didn't ask for all that, but...
That was a good discussion after yesterday, the meeting. Very pertinent to what's going on in our county.
Yep.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under Development Disabilities, approve agreement with developmental disability and prosecutor for support of developmental disba, disabled individuals, and declare it necessary transfer funds pursuant to Ohio Rose Code 570515 and 16. Said fees for year 2016 and 17 will be $31,023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under the Engineer Entering Consent Legislation with ODOT, form a bridge replacement structure located on Oberlin Road, Township Road 39, over Ingle ditch, Amherst Township. Bridge is currently scheduled to be constructed in 2016. No funds are required from the county, except that the engineer agrees to assume 100% of total cost of any added construction items requested by the county, and not necessary of improvement as determined by state and federal highway administration.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
I have no further comments. Just wanna thank you.
Mr. Anis?
I have no report this morning.
Well, as was stated, we had our Team Lorraine County Board meeting yesterday morning, and then after that, we had a, a ditch hearing for Gore Orphanage Ditch, the first of two. Hopefully, we're gonna come to some resolution on that. We had one property owner who is not real happy about the, the progress of that ditch being cleaned out, so hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have that underway, and other than that, that's about it. Everybody had a happy Thanksgiving. Go Browns. I mean, really, go Browns.
Take your names with you.
Don't find any more creative ways to lose.
Right, right.
Unbelievable. A kick six. God bless John Gurney and what he calls things. Yeah, as Commissioner Coasey said, Team Lorraine County met yesterday morning going over, we'll be having our annual Groundhog Economic Forecast coming up the end of January 1st to February. Just a lot of dialogue on how the dynamics of the organization are gonna change. Attraction is no longer a major part of the equation. Jobs Ohio has changed it through Team Neo, down to us, to business retention and expansion. Jim, you wanna jump in on this conversation, as our dialogue went yesterday?
I wasn't paying any attention to you, Commissioner.
Imagine, yeah.
He never does.
I was talking about the Team Lorraine County discussion, as it's changing from an attraction piece, and as we come out of this recession, to a degree, is now business retention and expansion and some overlaps.
The, the attraction piece always sounds glamorous until you try to do it. Years ago, in the mosaic of, of the strategies that were being deployed in Lorraine County, there really was no attraction strategy, and it was felt that, that one was needed, and hence, Team Lorraine County was, was formed to fill that void. But sometimes you're filling a void that really isn't a void and doesn't need to be filled. The, it's, it's, it, there's been no success in the attraction piece.
Nothing long-term and nothing longstanding.
Correct. And companies, they hire firms to go out and do site evaluations, site selections, and normally, by the time they're talking to us, they've already been on the ground several times, and they pretty well have a feel for where they, they wanna be at. The concept is old. It's 35, 40 years old, where you go out, you, you go to different events, and you try to lure companies to come to your community. I, I don't think that that's the strategy anybody's having success with, and we know that Team Neo is now on its third reinvention of itself, because they were supposed to be the attraction arm for northeast Ohio when they first started. Thankfully, we haven't, we haven't gone through the millions and millions and millions of dollars, and keep going, millions, what that Team Neo went through in the last decade plus, without really satisfying any of that, that, that outcomes that they, they figured they were gonna get. It'll be interesting what happens with Team Lorraine County. I think that, I think that we have a need for Team Lorraine County somewhere in, in the mix, but, but they have, they're gonna have a struggle. Funding's gonna be an issue. Finding, finding a niche that they're not stepping on, somebody else's toes, is, is a bit of an issue. But I thought the meeting was one of the most productive ones we had yesterday. The conversation was, was really good, and we have until May or June to work collaboratively with, with the folks that are there in the private sector to, to come up with what the next look's gonna be for Team, Team Lorraine County.
Said it was good discussion yesterday. I mean, it was all out on the table, and we heard a lot of issues from the private sector, and we conveyed our issues from the government's side, and...
You know, it's, it's a great, it's a great environment for that conversation, and I've often suggested to Team Lorraine County that a facilitation role between business and government is, is also an important part of what they should be doing, and, and I also suggested that with regard to working collaboratively on regional income sharing.
Oh, yeah, the regional revenue sharing.
Right. And, because we see businesses moving from one community to an adjacent community within the whole of our community, and, you know, revenue agreements make, make that a little bit easier to bear from the losing to the gaining community, and we need to start that, looking at that, and Team Lorraine County could be a voice in, in how that's, how that's facilitated. They don't really have a dog in the hunt. Everybody else has something, there's a, you know, that, that, that they're trying to achieve. Team Lorraine County is, is neutral in that. They're worried about the four, four corners of Lorraine County rather than just one part of Lorraine County. So hopefully, they can find a really good role, but, yeah, it was a great meeting yesterday.
It was very good. Hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving. Again, the Team Lorraine County Orphanage Ditch. And if you're free Friday night, I'll be doing Slubbery bartending at Mexican Mutual from 6 to 9, so I'll be slinging drinks.
Heavy pour there?
Well, always a heavy pour, man. I pour 'em for you like I pour 'em for me. End of my report.
Okay. Well, yeah, had a great Thanksgiving with, with family, and the Transit Advocacy Group that's been meeting in the county is going to resume the meetings now with the Thanksgiving holiday behind us, so we'll be getting back to work on that. Also, Friday morning, 8:30 AM is going to be the Community Alliance, the Round Table of Elected Officials. Very much appreciate what the Community Alliance does. There aren't a lot of counties that actually bring together city and township leaders on a regular basis to, to collaboratively work on issues, but we're fortunate enough to have such an organization, and, so, looking forward to attending that on, on Friday. Also, I know we've been going through these budget hearings, and we've said time and time again about how tight money is. I still have, you know, great concerns because we've seen requests come in above par from the previous year, and I would just, you know, encourage my colleagues, if you're interested, I, I think we should look at, you know, sending a letter to the departments that have made requests beyond par, and ask them to, once again, go back to the drawing board and reconsider, you know, in an effort to, to say to them, hey, we're willing to work with you, but, you know, you have to understand just how serious the situation is. Give them, I guess you could say, one more bite at the apple, to see if they can come up with an alternate proposal, so that we can get as close as possible, because right now, we're probably looking at maybe about a $2.3 million difference in what the asks are and what we've got available, and, you know, we just have limited resources, and the, the state is absolutely never going to come to our aid. You know, things are just getting worse down there, so the cavalry is not coming. We're on our own. We have to fend for ourselves. So I think, you know, if my colleagues would be supportive, I think we should send yet another letter, just simply stating what the situation is and asking them to fine-tune their numbers one more time before we ultimately make the final decision.
Give them the opportunity before we finish it up. Yeah, it's fine, I know better. Welcome being a Commissioner.
Yeah.
You make all your friends angry right before Christmas.
Exactly, exactly.
But, yeah, if we can draw some out, send it to all the departments who have come above last year's allocation, and see if we can work with them to bring it closer down to gap the shortfall.
Especially when, where they're asking us to raise their baseline for future years, I have a kind of issue with that, especially, I know some, you know, police cars or sheriff's cars we, we may need, but I don't wanna raise that for the, for future years, so...
The, the, as, since we're talking about the budget by May, some of the requested additional funds was guaranteed contractually obligated raises.
Oh, that, yeah.
The, uh... So I would caution that...
We've got some mandates in there to...
Right.
Elections.
That we approve those contracts here, so we... I'll give you just to... Because the public doesn't really understand a lot of what we do sometimes, and we do try to explain, but, you know, we don't get a lot of visitors, and people sometimes fashion ideas of what we're doing from conversations that have with people that still don't know what we're doing. The Sheriff's Department is at the tail end of the contract, so when we're opening our contract, they're just heading into the second year of a three-year contract, and their folks are merely getting what the lead contract's got a couple of years before. So, you know, trying to sort again, you know, sort out what we're... What's obligated in the collective bargaining agreements and what is actually truly an increase outside of that.
That's what we need, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and quite frankly, we may need reductions. If we froze everybody, he still has to give those contractual... Contracted raises from the C B A, so he would need the big cuts and possibly cuts in the most expensive area, the biggest area, which would be salary and benefits.
Well, I think if we just go back and have them... I mean, again, we know the collective bargaining agreements that we have to honor, uh, but, you know, go back and see what else can be taken out of those to get us back down to par. I think we're all aware of... And again, it's good to explain it to the public. We know we're in contracts, and they rotate over a three-year basis to get all nineteen units taken care of, but somewhere we can tighten it up, so... Let them reexamine their budget, you know?
Sharpen the pencils.
Exactly. Use a microscope.